Okay, we're at seven o'clock and we're already in session because we had non-public before that, so if you'd stand and join me for the pleasure of each.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, agenda reviewing. Schools out survey, we're going to add to the superintendent's report. Okay, the next hour of business is acceptance of minutes for the school board meeting of January ninth. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Removed by Dr. Jim.
Seconded.
Seconded by Brody. And if there's a couple of minor corrections that Stephanie brought to my attention that she'll give to Kathy, they're non, they don't have any major change, major changes within the minutes away there. So other than that, and so yes, Tom?
I would like to see the number of 169 broken down, 1.3 and 26, 1.3 being IDed existing SROs at middle school, at high school, and 26 being picked up by law court. And in fact, that's 26, we don't know whether it came from the elementary school and a few little guys called Gilson. And also, I think that from the last night, I thought he did, I think he described that as a, now I'll leave after.
Okay, if you would just get your changes that you want to Kathy, and in writing, that would be helpful.
Yes. What was, what was Stephanie's action?
There was just some changes on the voting procedures on the SRO. It was not, it does not affect the end result.
Okay. Any more to follow, go ahead.
Just the total number of the count of guesses and no is who should vote or this or that. So again, it doesn't affect the end result for the outcome.
What if the number changed?
The number, the number I believe is seven to two initially on our initial vote in who is supporting and not supporting the warrant article. At the deliberative session in here, it was pretty, pretty well known that everyone was in support of it at that point in time. There was a lot of, there was a question, we took the original note because of some of the information that we had received from the police department.
Was the police vote was correct?
Yeah, was, was one of those was correct, we sort of just went back and corrected. But it doesn't affect the outcome of who's supporting the SRO.
So one of the votes was correct?
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay.
But where, where it's going to be on the warrant, I feel like towards, towards it is no specific number.
Well, I'm just going to drink some water.
Yes.
I have a chance on the change.
Correct. Any other discussion on the minutes for the January ninth meeting? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim Pippen?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chairlittar as well.
Oh, is this guy here somewhere?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, because I didn't even check over to you, but they are here, sorry about that. Sorry, I have to get in. Okay, the next is the academic affairs committee meeting for January 24th. That's academic affairs members that were there.
I move that we accept the minutes of the January 24th meeting of the academic affairs committee.
Moved by Charlene.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tom. Okay, those that were there, any corrections on those? We're seeing none at the moment, all those in favor of the academic affairs committee. Tom?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And that was the only members there, I believe, at that committee meeting? Okay. And the next one was a special board meeting on the 24th. Okay, and then we had a special board meeting, or second board meeting on January 24th. Let's look for a motion to approve minutes of the January 24th meeting. Everybody Jim Pippen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, comments? Concerned, yes?
I'll just point out, there's a table on page three, Kingswood stuff.
Oh, no, Kingswood. It is. Okay, any other comments on that?
I wanted to add a point. At the SRO, the discussion of notes in the SRO warrant article, could you use the mic, please? See, I know it, hi. Thank you.
Hello, Michael. At the discussion of the SRO warrant article, at the end, three lines up, it says, "Discussion included data that was provided by the police department on cases that have been handled by the SRO program." Just to include a note that these are cases that originated or were, they were originated at the Kingswood complex, but actually, so if I'm actually not mistaken, they presented data on offenses, not cases on that matter. Correct?
We had three definitions here over two nights. We had offenses, we had defense offenses, and then they came up, actually, offenses, and that was the number of offenses to almost 200.
Right, so, and we learned that those were just orig, they heard about them, that the case originated or was reported on the Kingswood complex, but we were told that that is not how many offenses or cases are occurring at the Kingswood complex. We've heard of our cases in Maine and things like that.
Right, that many cases were reported to the SRO and with that four good, good law jurisdiction that would handle, so if it happened, and let's say we're, Chris was not here, then the SRO would take that report and send it on. There are, we have a real problem with the data that's applied to us. I think it was more explanatory than it was for us.
Well, to that, to that point, yeah, to that point, just to add a note of clarity in the minutes, that we were presented data on cases, excuse me, offenses, not cases, that night, and that we received clarity that not all of these were taking place on the Kingswood complex, that they were just, that the case itself was being reported on the Kingswood complex.
Correct, correct. Okay, all right, any other clarity on that meeting? Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes of the January 24th meeting. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pippen?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana? You weren't there. And Chairlittar as well. Okay, and the last thing on this section is the manifest to be approved and signed tonight. The accounts payable manifest that are being signed tonight, total $2,546,617.98. And the payable manifest being signed tonight, $1,808,921.13. Total manifest being signed by the board is $4,306,356,539.36. Are there a motion to approve the manifest being signed?
No, no, no.
Seconded. Moved by Jim, seconded by Jim Pippen. All those in favor approving the manifest for tonight, saying aye, Tim, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pippen?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chairlittar as well. Okay, next is public input. We, you can talk to the mic here if you would like to speak to us tonight. Public input, 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting and 15 minutes at the end of the meeting. Limit your comments if possible to three minutes so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. So if anyone would like to have public input now, please feel free to come. Okay, if not, we'll move on to the student representative report. Marcella?
Hello, everyone. Kingswood students are getting ready for our annual winter carnival events. These events take place the week before February break and include arm wrestling, an obstacle course race, a sack race, three-legged race, potato race, sled pole, chess tournament, crossfire, name that tune, and a four-person relay. The ice skating competition will be the highlight of all these events, with each class competing to earn much fewer points from the judges. The National Ice Society continues to take part in weekly training before school and additionally leading youth kids on Saturday mornings. The Jane Foley class will also be working with Mr. and Mrs. Foley to create a high school curriculum similar to ours for other schools to follow. This will allow other high schools and students to have the opportunity to gain a better global perspective. LRTC will be celebrating career and technical education week during the week of February 13 through 17. Spring semester running star registration is a full swing. We are offering six spring classes where students can earn three to four college credits for their particular courses offered through Lakeview Union College. Mrs. Kravitsky shares that health signs won students became first aid certified after completing their emergency care unit. The units are currently working on basic ice court training. Additionally, all classes are busy preparing for the BOSSA state competition that will be held at their state of the Hampshire BOSSA conference in March. Mrs. Cameron announces that our faculty will be attending their state conference on February 9th and 10th in Manchester, Hampshire. Mr. Fariger shares that FDLA students have organized a task talk on Tuesday with Olympic track coach, Coach Dave Garen. Coach Garen will be speaking to interested students about perseverance and the ease to achieving their goals while connecting back to coaching experience. Mr. Scott Eastler and the multimedia students continue to produce their top-notch program, Night Watch. The stagecraft students are working on their next production and will be opening the show up to the public very soon. Please stay tuned for more information. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Marcella. Moving on then to superintendent's report.
Good evening. First, I would like to turn it over to Principal Small and her staff to present on one of their class projects. And just for the board's information, we're shifting to focus on competency-based education and how that is showcased in each of our schools at our board meetings. Go ahead, Principal Small.
Thank you for having us. We're very excited to have you here. I looked at our calendar and I think it's been 2018, I believe, since we last closed the school board meeting here. So we're very excited to have you back. I know that, of course, you've heard all about Tucktaro Central School for the deliberative session on Saturday, but of course, it's our time to shine and here you are. So I have to brag a little bit on TCS before we cut on our lovely student and staff presentation. We're having a terrific year here at TCS on so many different levels. Of course, thrilled to be pulling out of the pandemic, but also really excited we have some new staff members, we have some new initiatives, things that we're really proud of that are going well. And we've really been opening our doors to the community this year. We've had dinners, book fairs, ice cream socials, Thanksgiving events. It's been really lovely and a great chance to kind of embrace the community once again. And of course, we just finished up our winter sports run, which is always a Tucktaro, Tucktaro favorite for sure. I also have to give a nice shout out to our PT CO. We have, of course, I'm biased, but I think we have the loveliest PT CO who stuck with us through the entire worst of the pandemic, finding ways to keep us connected and funded all through the pandemic, and they continue to. So they're such a thriving part of our community here and we're really fortunate for that, for our parent connections. I do want to say, of course, we are focusing heavily on our reading and math skills and filling in some gaps and providing quality intervention from students. And we are using a multi-tiered system approach, both for that and for behavior issues as well, which has been really, really successful and using data to drive our instruction. And we're very excited about our social emotional tool that we welcomed this year. It's a new software app called Kecory, which is actually geared just for Tucktaro school, which is very exciting. It was, the software is actually created around our four values, which are to be ready, considerate, a contributor, and a thinker. And so that's used for each part of our morning meeting and some of our, our character building activities throughout the day and throughout the year. So, without further ado, welcome again. We're happy that we've seen you. And in order to kind of kick off our student events here, I would like to introduce Kaye Hills from Bureau of Curriculum.
Thank you. As the superintendent shared, our students tonight, we have three sixth graders joining us, as well as our teacher, Mrs. Clark. They will be sharing competency-based education in action. So the competency that they will be sharing today is closely read and analyze literary texts. And there are a couple of aligned state standards, specifically citing textual evidence, or evidence and details from the text to support analysis of what the text says, and to describe how a particular story's or drama's plot unfolds, as well as how the characters respond or change as the plot moves toward a resolution. They will be showcasing those tonight.
Hi, I'm Kristen Clark. I'm the sixth grade teacher here at Tucktaro Central. Very, very appreciative of the three students who you will meet shortly, who decided to come here tonight so they could share some of their learning. What we are focused on today is an assignment that was based on a fictional book called Fish in a Tree. Fish in a Tree is a book about a girl who discovers, with the help of a teacher, that the difficulty she's been having all the way through till sixth grade actually have to do with the fact that she had dyslexia. She was the child, or is the child, of a military family, and she moved around a lot, so she did not have a lot of time to stay in one location. But while staying in this particular location in the book, she meets a teacher who helps her, and a lot of things change for her. A lot of changes happen in the book, and so this assignment focused on having students explore how specific characters change. They got to pick their own character from the book that they wanted to focus on, and then explore changes that they witnessed in their characters, and to go back into the book and find evidence of those changes and cite them. They used a graphic organizer, which you were just handed, to plan a paragraph about how a character changed throughout the novel. The students began this assignment first by completing a shorter exercise where they chose a trait that they thought defined a character, and then used the novel to find a few quotes to support that trait. They filled in information on a smaller, shorter graphic organizer, and that gave them a little bit of time to practice the skills of going to the book and finding evidence to support their claims. Next, I modeled doing this assignment for them. So we walked through the process with me doing the assignment, and that's the writing that you see on the back. The students received that blind copy, but what you see on the back is me going through that assignment, and I did that with my students in the classroom. So I modeled how I went through the assignment, talked about any difficulties I might have had finding any evidence to support claims, and also modeled for them what that assignment would look like. I also produced a paragraph at the bottom and then talked to my students about how we can tie evidence from the book into a Greek paragraph to support our claims about how we felt a character changed in the book. The students are using this to practice supporting further character study in future novels that we'll read. And they're also practicing supporting their ideas with evidence and using pre-writing strategies. So that's that graphic organizer you have. From there, I'm going to go ahead and let our students introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is, oh, is this, yeah. Hi, my name is Reeve Rula, and I chose Ally. And I chose her because she's a fun person and she has a great personality, I think. And then, the changes that I saw in the book were, at the beginning, she had a bully named Shay, and when Shay used to bully her, she used to keep all her feelings inside and didn't tell people about her dyslexia. And at the end of the book, she was much more confident and much more, she felt smarter about herself, because at the beginning of the book, she felt dumb and stupid and like she wouldn't be like any of the other kids in her class. And at the beginning of the book, she thinks she's smart and is much more confident.
My name's Emily Warner. My name's Emily Warner, and I chose the character Oliver because I thought he was a sweet boy, but he wasn't exactly the main character. He was mentioned a few times in the book, but not that often. And I chose him because he was, in the beginning, he was like really skittish and insecure and really anxious about himself, and he was kind of rude to Ally. Like he, like he said some really rude things about her, like, and it was just, I'm sorry, it was kind of like bad. And so he was, um, so, and then he realized that what he was doing was like really bad, and there was the bully Shay that Reeve was talking about, and she was really getting to him and like being rude. So he started standing up for himself and saying stuff like back, back, like comebacks. And in the end, he's a really good character.
Hi, my name's Kaylaun Boinsford. The character I chose from this book was Albert. I chose him because I just like loved his personality, and he just really doesn't care what people think about him. He's very smart and visual, and he seems like he really does enjoy learning. In the beginning, Albert's just like, he's just like that person, that person that just like what I said, loves to like learn. And he starts to like, he lets people like treat him really badly, but in the middle of the book, he starts to change. And when bullies are bullying him and his friends, he just stands up for him and his friends, and then,
So I'm just curious from the three of you, how difficult was it for you to find evidence of your character changing in the book?
It was kind of harder for Albert because he wasn't like the main character, but it wasn't so hard that I have to like look through the book so much. So it was.
Like I said earlier, he was, he was like not the main character. He was only mentioned a few times. So I basically had to reread the book in order to find like, like a few times where he was there and like examples of that and stuff. So it was kind of difficult, but sometimes I enjoyed it.
Honestly, it was really easy because she was the main character and every single page was filled with stuff basically.
And then one final question for the three of you. Is there anything you might do differently next time we explore a character study like this in another novel?
Probably not, because I think I did really good on this assignment, and I probably wouldn't change anything.
I think I did good as well, but I normally write like a lot longer stuff, things too. So the next time, I'm going to try to like write a lot more than whatever this time, because it's like true.
I think next time, I'm going to try to rely more on my words instead of a lot of quotes, because that's what I use. So I'm just going to try to.
Use more Lee. So thank you all three very much. It was super helpful for you to come here tonight. Thank you. Thank you so much for that excellent presentation. That was so great, and we love to hear student presentations and everything that you're doing in the classroom. I totally appreciate your time. You're welcome to stay if you like, but we understand if you don't.
With your sixth graders and just Mark, I just want to say thank you so much. You've been a teacher for 10 years, and you made my heart sing tonight. So thank you so much for bringing your words tonight, and keep working hard in LA, and we will win all the fights against insurance companies in the future. Good job. I don't know whether, excellent work tonight.
Yes, well done. Okay, so next, we have a presentation. Erin House, athletic director from the high school, is here to speak about his proposal for the girls' ice hockey team cooperative team for Kingswood and Prospect Mall.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm joined tonight by several members of our girls' ice hockey team, as you can see them proudly displaying their jerseys. Well, it's not a requirement for them to come tonight, but as we go forward with our season and counter opponents and other things that come our way this season, it's important for me to at least let them know that the process in place, the things that happen, and for them to come and show the support as we pursue this cooperative. So, a little background information, there's a PowerPoint slide, it's a very personal thing, that packet that I'm handing out, followed by a memo of understanding, and then also what would be our draft status of our team application that would go up to the NHIA/AA. And basically, a little background information for girls' ice hockey, we are in our 11th year of existence as a program, a standalone program. We've had players, you know, start this program early on, they can go through a five-year status of making sure their program could be, could survive and last. And here we are in our 11th season, not even to do a cooperative until this time. What we're faced with right now is over half of our students will graduate this year, seniors. In the past, it just hasn't been a real aggressive push to try to get underclass to then for the last couple of years, and we fixed that. We've gone out and got several freshmen to join us this year. We're looking forward to having several eighth graders joining us next year. And our roster size is very near to here, but we've always been able to get, get a team on the ice when we go out and compete. Our program also has a history of community service that's been embedded long before I was the coach. I'm coaching the team this year, so this is me coming from the ice rink in practice just a few moments ago. But Lawrence escaped, they've been involved with that, helping area youth, kids from across the district that have skill on ice arena, which is something they've done annually. As far as the NHIA, the girls' ice hockey is concerned, there's one division right now. It consists of 17 teams. There seems to be more schools getting involved here and there, but there's many, many teams that are doing co-ops in the state of New Hampshire right now. As a matter of fact, eight teams right now out of those seven. As a matter of fact, eight teams right now out of those 17, so 47% of the teams that are competing in Division One girls' ice hockey in the NHI are a cooperative arrangement, meaning two or more schools have come together to make sure they can put a team on the ice. The third slide there, I know it's a very tiny print, but as of right now, out of the 17 teams, we're ranked 14th in population. Our number is there at 735. If we were to be able to move forward with a cooperative with Prospect, we would only be bumped up a few slots with a combined enrollment of 1,152 students. And that basically, in half, and that may be the female student body that'd be interested in playing ice hockey. So I put together the process of forming a cooperative team and the NHI has bylaw to oversee these type of processes. And the very first step is a memo of understanding that would come from administrators within building and then also school boards agreeing to allow athletic departments to move forward. So, we provided you the idea of the memo of understanding. The hope would be that we vote to let this go forward tonight and then Prospect has their school board meeting tomorrow. Our girls won't be able to attend that meeting. We have a game tomorrow in Manchester, but one of our coaches that lives in that district will be in attendance to support the cause. We also have several parents that will be attending down there with their daughters in hopes that their school board will approve it. Once the school boards and the administrators move forward, we would submit that understanding to the NHI, along with our formal application. And I also included that in the packet. For the most part, it's complete, all the numbers they've asked for, enrollment numbers, who would be the lead school, things like that are all in that application and ready to go. You know, the benefits to student athletes in the community for me is really about creating more opportunity for students to participate in a sport. They may not be otherwise offered to them. So in this case, Prospect, there are several girls down there that are interested in playing ice hockey at the high school level, but right now, they have no option. So to me, it's an issue of access and equity. And I think if we're able to provide female student athletes in Prospect to join us with our hockey program, it just is a great situation for everyone involved. Ultimately, we need numbers to keep our program going and they, of course, are interested in being able to represent their community playing high school hockey. So there's additional bullets in there. I'm happy to answer the questions you may have. I don't know how much information you already have or what questions you have on your mind, but I'm here to answer those questions and do the best I can and give you those answers.
Thank you. Okay, this is, okay, good. Thank you for the presentation with Aaron. And I was just curious, how much is Prospect Mountain, how much is their school district going to pay for the girls' ice hockey program?
Yeah, so at this time, we're not interested in having them contribute financially to the process or the program. We figure if this isn't approved by either school board or both, we still plan on having girls' ice hockey. So to me, we really know that we increase cost by having them participate. Two questions that may come up down the road is their own transportation. Most kids find their way to the practices. We also think that travel hockey parents, a lot of those kids that are down in Prospect are used to getting themselves to the rink. The question could come up, is Prospect comfortable allowing kids and parents to get themselves to the rink? Or should they be charging a bus to come off and do practices? That could be one situation where they will be faced with their own transportation costs. The only other question that's come up in my mind are coaching segments. If you had four black girls from that school, I think it would be in everyone's best interest to also have a coach from that district also with them. So, you know, how does that look? That is not a thing that we have in that country.
Okay. I know I see Winnicott was one of the schools. Would you have any kind of experience on how the cost sharing works out down the road possibly? I know it's very speculative, but is there, I guess my question is, is there cost sharing? It doesn't determine, I'm just curious if eventually we're gonna be having to, you know, look at how the cost sharing works and how transportation and all that works.
Usually, the lead school or the host school, you know, that is usually in more proximity to the rink is, you know, and pursuing to bring on kids, has the cost of the ice time and so on. So, it depends on, you know, the other schools, but there's no rink in the Hampton area other than Exeter. But they would definitely be in charge, are responsible for their own transportation.
I was just curious about costs.
Thank you. I'm very supportive of this. I do sit on the council for the NHI. So it's an easy process to get a little paperwork done as long as the schools are all in favor of this and they go to approve it. As far as transportation goes, I know there was some discussion about on away games. Sometimes you can have a common beating place where if Kingswood is using a bus to go to an away game, we can certainly meet the students from Prospect Mountain at a particular location and go to the away game and then on the way back, meet at the same place to drop these students off. So, there's all kinds of options to make that happen. I think it's a great opportunity. One of the big things is, you know, really giving the opportunities for all students to want to participate, the opportunity to participate. It ain't to see whether it be girls' hockey or any other sport, not be able to survive because you can't bring two schools together and make it happen. And I think certainly the proximity of all the Prospect Mountain schools so close, it makes a lot of sense to get this cooperative formed and we can do that. Our next council meeting is in May and I believe if everything is in place at that point, then it will be approved for the next season. If that's to get both schools again approved at this time. Any other comments on this?
Yes.
I might want to reference this to you, this Jack. Originally, when the co-op programs were established, there was timeframes around it. They had to stop after a certain period of time to hope the schools could play on their own. Now, it appears to be over time that that eventually happened. Did they drop that?
It really depends on the population of each school. There was a situation, there was something out about before we had a council meeting this past week. And one school, one school really wasn't holding their end of the bargain for a cooperative team. So the one of the teams said, you know, we want out. You can do that. You can get out in the middle of a cycle. The cycle is two years. So each cooperative team is approved on a two-year cycle. And, you know, as long as the cooperation between the two individual towns, in some cases, three towns, three school districts, is working and the kids are having the opportunity to play, there's no issue with anything. So they really haven't dropped any rules.
But I do know that when they first started the program, there was timeframes that they would go for X number of times and then you had to go on.
Yeah, it really depends more on population, the student body who is participating now. So this could go on for a two-year cycle, it could go on for 10 years if it makes it appropriate for that many students from each school to participate. Yes, Claudia?
Who wrote the MOU?
Who typed that MOU up?
Yeah, who just wrote it up.
That was me. And, you know, speaking of the MOU, obviously you shared that with Prospect Mountain, obviously they have the same MOU to present to the board tomorrow. Right, everything that you have is what they have tomorrow. Yes?
Thank you, Aaron, for coming and thank you all for coming to support our, we do what you do on the ice out there, so thank you. I'm wondering, Aaron, if you could give us a sense of the numbers. You talked about having a lot of new seniors and some new freshmen coming in. What will the balance of the team look like in terms of Kingswood, Prospect, Mountain next year? Could you give us a sense of that?
Yeah, so I believe those numbers are in that application piece to a degree, but I can answer. So, it's tough, Stephanie, I mean, we can, I think there's a lot of excitement around our growth program right now. Even Marcelle over there, we're trying to get her out. Almost had her. So, there's some new excitement around it. I think, you know, I'm hoping all the girls are having fun this year, but where they don't want to come back. So that would give us anywhere six to eight. We should have anywhere four to six middle schoolers from eighth grade coming in as freshmen. And then what we understand to be down in Prospect Mountain is at least two or four, but it could even go up from there. If this is approved, you'll see us get pretty busy pretty quickly. Just making sure that the girls down there, the girls up here know that this is happening. And as they say in most schools, no real offseason, we're gonna continue to try to build a roster and just put a good program together for the girls every year.
Well, I appreciate it and I apologize for not being able to find the numbers that you're saying are in here. I'm asking because, one, I want to make sure we have enough players. And two, relative to the cost, which currently isn't a share, currently Kingswood is taking on 100% of the funding for the program, which is stated in the application. But if this MOU is kind of revised on an annual basis, you know, and this is maybe something for the board to consider, would we, would we want, if the numbers get tipped, more 50/50? Would it be appropriate to ask Prospect Mountain to contribute to funding the ice hockey program?
Yeah, I think a lot of that has to do with, obviously, our program has been in existence for 11 years, so we fully fund our program. I'm not sure what Prospect Mountain's processes for adding, you know, adding a new program on. So that might lead into if they have a scale payment like we do, at a certain point, it would certainly be appropriate then for them to be, you know, community defenders. But if they, right now, if they have no funding set aside, we're already funding the hockey team 100%. Hopefully, we have enough students. If Prospect Mountain only has one or two schools. But what is the minimum number of students that would be required to have a team put together to be able to go out on the ice and be a viable team?
So, coming out of the gate for us at Kingswood, you know, we want a minimum of 10 and a goalie, so 11 in total. But that would be their minimum. So, the state allows you to dress 18 and two bullies. We want a little break from that, it's 19 skaters and one goalie, 20 is your max in a game. Right now, our boys' ice hockey program has unprecedented numbers. They have 26 kids that are registered for that boys' program. So, Coach Potenza is always just trying to find those 20 that are dressed for that particular game. So, you know, it could be that one day we're looking at, we've done our lion's share of marketing and grassroots recruiting and we have a lot of girls, so to Dr. Jim's point, we then go back to Prospect, like I said. We've got 15, you got 17, probably time to break it up. It does come down to something about ice time and that becomes a professional fairness to who's getting on the ice on a regular basis.
Thank you.
So, the agreement says, so this is to be reviewed annually. This, the MOU currently has a two-year period, but I also noticed in the PowerPoint slides that you shared that Plymouth is interested in potentially joining us as well.
So this, yes, this is great.
So I'm wondering if this is, if the date of the agreement might be better revised to be one year?
Well, I think for NHI, you do an application for a two-year cycle. So the MOU has to be for two years. If Prospect Mountain comes forward, I mean, if Plymouth comes forward next year and says, can we join? That's, then you could revise it, but when you make your application to the NHI, it's gonna change something.
Yeah, and sorry if that's confusing, I just thought it was in the conversation early on. And I just like to be as transparent as possible, that they may come into us in a year and say, hey, can we join? We have some girls that want to play hockey. So, I think at that point, we have to look at, hope that everything is doable from an NHI standpoint. Are we happy with our original with Prospect?
Well, I know at least one seventh grade girl who's gonna come up and say, oh, so...
Okay, Claudia?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU as written to empower our district officials in to sign it.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Do you have a second?
Okay, seconded by, all right, we'll give it to Sean, that's fine. Move by Claudia, seconded by Charlene. Okay, so all in favor of approving the cooperative MOU? Darren?
I support the idea of Prospect Mountain joining in this effort. And because most of our away buses are red light and less steps than Prospect Mountain. Whether it be road 140 or 28 or 11. I would just hope that when we play the northern games, that maybe Prospect Mountain can have pickup at our high school. And that way, not us running across it all the way down. But anyway, just a point for you guys to work out on away games. Now, the other thing is, I appreciate the glass league girls at Kingswood. And Ben, you probably already have the information in back, how many years have you been in the system, in the girls' class?
It's our 11th year.
11th year. Has it been any year that it's been disrupted because of lack of physical pressure?
I wouldn't say disrupted, there's swings in roster sizes. It's been as high as, I think, 20-ish and as low as 11 and 12.
So this is good for both schools. It keeps our enrollment of the team up. Okay, well, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other input? Okay, let's take a roll call vote. All those in favor of supporting the cooperative application for the girls' hockey team? Tom Vickert? Claudia?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pippin?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chad, I as well. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have an agenda item, deliberative review, information and discussion for the board.
Yeah, I just wanted to review a little bit, you know, Saturday's procedure. I think the deliberative session went pretty well. I was actually surprised that the number of people had actually showed up as cold as it was after this. But I thought the session went pretty well, there weren't a lot of questions I asked at the time. But again, the warrant article will be posted. The ballot will reflect the boys' position on each one of the warrant articles on there and we'll move forward from there. So, anyone has any input on Saturday, yes?
I noticed before, and I meant to mention it, we had it posted on our board on our website, the draft prior to the session. At least I could have found it. So, it was actually, someone brought it to my attention, they were a little bit aggravated and I was like, and I wanted to look for it. But I wanted to prove the wrong, he said we must have it on time, but we did. I was like, well, my apologies.
Certainly, that's an oversight on our part, but the warrant, the warrant should be posted now, I think, because it is officially approved.
It also was posted in the paper, it's entirely.
Yes, it was, I did see that. And I read it.
The Baysider is all coming at Harvard.
Yeah.
We're over here. I'm in charge of that part, can't answer, I don't know, I just know the clerk.
I wonder, I wonder what you get with the Baysider writers, whoever does that.
It's the same as Grand State.
It's the same as Grand State, we just have to have some, I'll look it up. No, but they have to, to let the paper stand.
Sounds good.
Because I was looking for it.
We can put it big on our website so that that's very.
Absolutely, absolutely, but I didn't want to state it was the newspaper.
Yeah, no, I, thank you.
Okay, any other info from Saturday? Okay, see, then let's move right on.
So, this is just for your information, there are two overnight trips, field trips that we are making you aware of. First, FBLA Future Business Leaders of America and also DECA, the DECA Leadership Conference, the annual conference. So those are two for your information. And then... So they do a lot of fundraising. This is through the Tech Center and they do a lot of fundraising for that. Okay. And then one item that we added is Schools Out Survey. So this is the survey that the Schools Out Program has for their parents to get input about the Schools Out Program that they do every year. It's particularly important this year because they're about to apply for the next. because they're about to apply for the next cycle of funding. So this is the fifth and final year of current support, and they're about to apply for the next five years of support. It's a crucial program at OSIP. About 80% of students participate in it. And it's my understanding the board reviews the survey every year. Is that correct? So this is for the board's action. Question?
I'll make a motion that we approve this survey first as an additional agenda item. Let's revise.
So we'll revise, but any agenda item has an action item. We didn't make it an action item. We approved it as an agenda item. So I take a motion that we make this as an action item. Move. Moved by Brody. Seconded by Stephanie. Again, just again technical initial compliance. So all those in favor of making the Schools Out survey an action item for this evening. Sue and place in. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
I just have a quick question. One of the questions I'm not sure. Did you use the mic?
Okay, we'll get back to that after we, if we approve it as an action item, we can get to here.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Stephanie. Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pippin?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair Woodside. So now it's an action item. And Brody makes a motion.
Actually, Dana can make the motion.
All right, Dana. All right, Dana, give Dana the motion. And Brody, this second. All right, now, before we take a vote, we'll address your concerns, Stephanie.
I was just wondering, the second question on the back, what it's intended to say? Provided after the program? Is it like to transport students like a late night?
Yeah.
I didn't know if that was.
Okay, any other questions?
No questions. I just want to comment. I've seen a lot of parents, either online or talk with them in person, very much depend on this program. And they're wanting to be very tentative from their municipal government. So it's good that we're always supportive, helping them access any kind of money that's out there to support the program. Having, is it not listed?
We do provide some grant support when we're able to.
So we do.
Yeah, we do go on weekends.
And there's a petition for it in the town office to support funding from the town office. So I hope, if anyone watches this later or video votes for that petition for it, it's really important.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions on this?
I just have one more. But the third question down, the choices for that are maybe concerning or maybe a little too prime. That it could be the case that just a parent doesn't need to care, but to ask who the child is home with and with or without, or what type of supervision they're under just seems a little, might be a little too prime. I don't know if that level of information is important or necessary.
Could you speak a little bit, Molly? I'm sorry. Closer to the mic.
I was never a diva. I apologize. I don't know how to use mics very well. The, it's the third question. Sorry, I just outnumbered. The choices for if your child is not attending the Schools Out program, what is the reason? And choices three, four, and five just seem a little, I don't know if we really require that level of information or that level of information needed in the survey. It just seems a little bit prime. And I only ask from a parent's perspective. I would question, why are they asking me about the supervisory arrangements with my children at home? And does it matter? You know, is it more the case that we should just say, "No, we're all set. We don't need the program"?
I see your point in section where it says, "Child is home without adult supervision."
Yeah. Like if that were the case, I may not be comfortable circling that as a parent, you know? Because it could just be for five or 10 minutes. But.
Some children don't require.
No, but just as a parent, these choices are uncomfortable for me.
Caroline, what would you, I've been married for days.
So some students may be home without adult supervision, but may not require adult supervision. They may have an older sibling from the high school who's there with them. So, you know, I think with this program, they're looking to find parent input. It's anonymous. And it's as a way for them to find out about the students in their school. So, you know, based on what students need. If it's cost, then they would want to help with that cost. So it's another way to get that information. But we can ask them to look at that if that would be helpful.
Do we know who wrote the survey? And if it's required to ask that question, get the grant? I recommend, Dr. Jim, to tell that.
That's what I'm wondering.
This is parent guardian survey that they send out every year. But we can certainly ask them to look at that question. Amy Lucier is the program director, and she certainly has a handle on her students. So we can look into that.
Heather? Without calling you, because I think you might remember this. We've had this discussion before when Jenny was running the program. And she told us that the survey that was presented was presented by the people who go into the grant. And if they had completed the way that they wanted, they can reject the group application. I remember that conversation quite distinctly. It was about my third or fourth year in the program. Which makes it one time ago.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other comments on this? This is an action item. Okay, all those in favor of approving the Schools Out survey? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pippin?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair Woodside as well. All right. I have one note here of congratulations on the birth of a baby boy named Leland to Jordan Legere on 1/21/2023. And I'd like to make one other comment about some discussions that we've had in non-public. Non-public is sometimes a very gray area, what you can't talk about in non-public. And just for clarification and transparency, we had some discussions about the MOU for the resource officer. And that's appropriate. That's a legal document that, once approved by the board, is a public piece of paper. While in discussion about the legalities of that MOU, that can be done in non-public. What I found, and we as a board sometimes get carried away in other discussions, talking about the effectiveness of the SRO officer or the warrant that doesn't warrant a warrant article for another one at all. And that's not a discussion that is appropriate for non-public. So just to be perfectly upfront, we're going to be very careful about what we talk about in non-public. There's a few board members here that will keep me certainly on my toes as far as, "Oh, we shouldn't be talking about that." But I think we just want to be very transparent about what we're doing in non-public and what we are allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. So we will just be more careful about what we discuss and cut the line off if we go over the line. Just want to make that comment. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports. And Charlene, you've got a ton of paperwork for us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jack. What I would like to propose that we do, and Brody, I haven't forgotten that you have a word you want us to forget. What I would like to do is make a motion that we consider items A, B, and C as a block. They're all up for second read. So I would make a motion that we approve these policies. And, you know, I would appreciate a second for the sake of discussion because Brody has a word in our mission statement that he would like us to think about changing.
Okay, Charlene's made a motion to approve A, B, and C, which is JJJR, JLCCA, ADA, IHBA, and GBCE-R, and GCA-A, which are second reads. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Charlene, seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, now we're open to discussion.
And Brody, you had something you wanted us to consider to modify in policy A, D. The philosophy of the governor would be regional school district.
Yeah, I just wanted to change the word effective to either strong or robust. I just felt like it was a better word. I don't know. I read it over a few times. I just think it sounded quite right.
He's looking at the last sentence. It's in paragraph two.
I just felt the word effective seemed like it would imply we're doing the building of community families to our purposes. So that strong might be a better describer. I know, I'm splitting hairs. I'm sorry.
Right here. He said strong or robust?
Either or. I mean more towards strong, because I showed up to the board. But Charlene pointed out that the word strength used earlier and robust might sound better.
Well, it's a missing word.
I'd like to do something very strong and effective to be related to family and school partnerships.
I'd be fine with that, too.
Strong and effective.
All right, do you need to make a motion?
No, we can insert that, and we'll modify the motion to approve as amended.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Now it's going to be strong and effective?
Strong and effective, yes. How does that sound?
That sounds wonderful.
All right.
I think it's too many minutes. I think we should be decisive.
All right, without splitting more hairs, let's take a vote. Okay, all those in favor of approving, you can see which of the policies that we just said with the one amendment.
Is it strong and effective or strong or effective?
Strong. Is that a word?
No, is it?
Strong, common, effective. No, strong and effective.
I think strong and effective.
Yes, and promotes strong and effective.
All right.
Or we could just ditch both of those words and use the word robust, which to me is kind of. Strong and effective.
Which would you like to use?
Okay, I'm. Let's see, strong and effective. Cause we're already in the middle of voting, though.
Fine. All right, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie? Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pippin?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair Woodside. Okay, Charlene, continue.
Hold on, I have to take out my phone. Sorry about that. Okay. So we have, coming up for first read, a whole slew of policies. We have CBI, the Superintendent Evaluation Goal Setting, the DGA, authorized signatures, DIH, broad convention and fiscal management, DK, payments, checks, and manifests, EBCG, communicable and infectious diseases, EHAC, electronic slash digital records and signatures, JICC, student conduct on school buses, JICCR, school best conduct rules, and then recommended for first read for revision and reaffirmation, Policy EB, safety program, Policy EBV, accident prevention and safety, EGA-E, Employee Volunteer Computer Network Acceptable Use Agreement, JGA-R, JWRSD, acceptable use policy for internet networking computers for students, JJJ, extracurricular activity eligibility, and recommend for withdrawal. Again, these are all first reads, so there's no voting on those tonight. First is for withdrawal, EEA-R, School Best Code of Conduct, EGA, Employee Electronic Communications, GBGAA, HIV slash AIDS policy, JLCCA, HIV slash AIDS policy, and last but not least, JLI, Safety Program. And just for clarification, because Brody had asked me about this for the meeting, whenever we have policies recommended for withdrawal, we do not withdraw policies unless they're redundant with existing policies or, you know, we already have what is containing these policies in policies elsewhere that are possible. So I know that Tom is going to want to make a recommendation, but these are all at the first read. And Tom, would you want to speak to what you want the board to perhaps consider for CBI, the Superintendent Evaluations and Goal Setting?
And the policy came up to you. I did some research, and I found out that I was. I'm saying all day about everything else. First, we say that we have voted on the evaluation process for superintendent already. That's set. But in future, we'll be doing evaluations on an annual basis or maybe less. But in doing research, I found that the New Hampshire School Board Association has quite a bit of information on constructing superintendent evaluations, forms, different laws, and so forth. And I think we may want to take some extra time to take a look at that so that when in future the evaluation comes up again, we've done our due diligence in seeing what's out there for other evaluation forms.
I think that's fine, Tom. And we accepted the proposed evaluation form for this year, which we will use for this year. And I agree that after this year, hung on an ongoing basis, if there's a better format or better evaluation process, then we'll get into it. It's interesting because this is the first time in a long time that we've had a superintendent that wasn't within the district. And for many, many years, we did our own kind of internal evaluations, but never in a formal process. A formal process is required, and it's something that we should do. And if there's a better format or better evaluation template that we can use or whatever, we should certainly do that. So after this year, and after we use the existing template that we have in place, we'll certainly do those evaluations.
And I think Caroline was very gracious toward the template that she provided us. You've got to start.
Thank you, Tom.
And I just want to remind everyone that, you know, the policies that are coming to you for first read tonight, please make sure that you go through the policies. If you see anything that needs to be corrected, spelling, a word you'd like to change or something that you need clarified, would you please get in touch with Heather Cummings, phone call or email, and let her know so that we'll all be prepared to move these forward for second read at our next board meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Charlene, are we going to talk about any of these? Or?
They're for first read, so.
Talk about for first read? No. Now that's, now that we brought it forward, what, then the rest of the board will look at what we brought forward for first read, and then they'll let us know prior to the next meeting, if they see anything they want changed.
So I had a follow-up question. Relative to EBCG, the Communicable and Infectious Diseases Policy, currently our Stay Open Plan encompasses a lot of the material that you'll see in that policy. And so even though the Stay Open Plan is not in our policy menu, I'm wondering if we would consider withdrawing that if we use this policy.
That would be, that would really be a discussion for academic affairs to decide.
And as we discussed at our last academic affairs committee meeting, the Stay Open Plan is something that was very, very specifically created for the COVID pandemic, and we encompass, and we need to have a policy in the policy book.
Yes.
Thank you, though.
Okay, all right, moving on. Jim Pittman, anything from doing the thing? No, no, stand down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, okay, yeah. I'm sorry.
Take a breath.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jeremy. I don't have much for building maintenance. I will say, Kathy, as I have discussed, that we will have a meeting in March of the committee. Timing will be related to outcome of the election and approval or not for various support articles and so on, so that'll be our next substantial meeting. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Jim. Under finance, strictly in the deliberative session, obviously worked well the other day. Get out to vote in March, and hopefully everyone will approve the budget and the teachers' contracts that we've, we've approved, that the voters will support that, as well as the maintenance warrant article that Jen just alluded to, because there's tons of projects that we try to do every year. We did reduce the amount we were asking for this year from two hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand, which from a vegetarian standpoint was the right thing to do. From a maintenance standpoint, there's plenty of projects out there that will use up more than, certainly more than one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we hope the support is there, as it has been the last. And also on the turf field, sixty thousand dollars, that's new money, it's money that is left over at the end of the year, that we can move into that trust fund if we can, and if it's supported by the taxpayers, and that sixty thousand dollars will help us toward the goal of having the turf field replacement fully funded when it's, when it comes to. Again, that's all I have for that. And nothing for human resources at this point. Advanced planning, you can see down below, there's no, February rotation is February twenty-seventh to March third. Our next board meeting is at Osiphe Central School on the thirteenth. The district voting is on Tuesday the fourteenth. Public input? Yes. Yes.
Well, as the board representative to Wolfboro Community Television, I'm happy to announce that on Wednesday, February the twenty-second, from six thirty to eight thirty in the Wolfboro Great Hall, there's going to be a candidates forum, I would, I should say a candidates night, where all the candidates running for, for office, all the school board, and then also in the town of Wolfboro, I should say, are going to be invited to come and introduce themselves, talk about, you know, why they want to run, and even those of us who are running in uncontested races are going to be invited. And so I just want to encourage everyone to watch the newspaper. I know that there's going to be, I believe, a link provided or an email address so that members of the public can submit questions for the candidates. And I wanted to make sure that everyone had it on their calendar, so that they could come to the Wolfboro Community TV sponsor, meet the candidates night. Thank you. February, well, it's Wednesday night, February twenty-second, which is also President's Day, from six thirty to eight thirty at the Wolfboro Great Hall, and which is in the town hall building.
Okay, anything else? Okay, public input? Would you like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Any closing comments? First of all, the kids did a great job tonight. They, it's always nice to, to ask students for the presentation, or something, that's true. Any other? Kelly, anything?
The. I just wanted to note that the Kingswood High School Theater Program is going to do a public performance of their competition show, and I think it's Martin and, so just.
Thank you. Anything? Okay. All right, Stephanie? Any final comments? No? Okay, that's, that's fine. Dr. Jim? And Charlene?
I'm just going to say it's great to be back in Tuckenbrooke.
All right.
Wolfboro Central School.
Tom, any, any final comments?
Really enjoyed it. And thank you for hosting us.
Thank you. Brody?
Thank you, Tuckenbrooke, for hosting us, and you said Jack, and I would vote. We'll remind everyone at the Osiphe Board Meeting to.
We will. Absolutely.
March fourteenth.
Absolutely. Dana?
Thank you very much for hosting us and the presentation. Long, we had you. Karen Stiles also.
Okay, I will intitiate a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Brody. Second by Dr. Jim. All those in favor, Tom.
Aye.
Brody.
Aye.
Stephanie. Dr. Jim.
Aye.
Jim Pittman.
Yes.
Charlene.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
We're out, thank you.